Good to go. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this regular county council December 11th meeting to order at nine thirty this morning. And I will start with the land acknowledgements. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. And I see that we also have Council Capitania joining us via Zoom. And before we go ahead with the approval of the agenda, we have a couple of additions to add. One will be five point seven, which is a section thirty dash one, ATI Act Economic Interest of Public Land, I believe, public land. And a secondary one, which will actually come in after the reports, will be enclosed as well, section twenty-nine, sub-one, ATI Act Advice from Officials Deliberations. And do we have any other additions, deletions, or changes that council would like to consider? Alrighty, so I'll go around and ask councillors what items on the agenda that they would wish to discuss. So far, what I know of are two point one, all of section five, five one through five seven, six point one, eight point one, eight point four, eight point five. And pardon me, that's section, all section five is five point eight, including that other addition that will come in after reports. Information will be ten point one A, ten point two, eleven point one, eleven point one F, eleven point one H, eleven point one Q. And I believe that's all the reports that I know of. Go ahead, please, councillor Hall. Eleven point one Y, eleven point one Y. Pardon me, sorry about that. Aye, right, forgot about that one. Okay. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, please councillor Hall.
That three point one, and eight point two, and eight point three.
Eight point two, and eight point three. Anyone else? I think we're covering most of it, so I will run through these again. If everybody's ready, two point one, three point one, five point one through five point eight, six point one, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, ten point one A, ten point two, eleven point one, eleven point one F, eleven point one H, eleven point one Q, and eleven point one Y. If we're ready to go, I have a motion to approve. Councillor Minz would like to go ahead and approve the agenda as discussed.
Before we vote on that, can we just get an explanation on why the closed section items are moved to the beginning? Normally, the agenda is set by council, and I don't recall any discussion with council about the order being changed.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, through to councillor Hall, that was a request of administration. We believe there's probably some privileged info that we need to share with all of councillors that might affect other items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If we're ready for the vote, for the motion on the, councillor Minz? Yep, all right, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, I see no opposed, no opposed, okay, nine and oh, thank you. Councillor Hall, would you like to go ahead for the three point one?
On page eight of the agenda, I just would propose that we strike out the language that begins with "the following is a brief summary" on both of those presentations. I've never understood why we make this part of the minutes. The brief summary of the presentations are included in the agenda packages. And there's no, this is unnecessary in the minutes, given minutes are decisions of council, and there's no decisions in either of these two sections. So that, you know, the language, "the following is a brief summary", and ending with the third bullet on each. So I just, my thought is we should strike that from the agendas generally.
Okay, thank you. I'm of the opinion that it's valuable information. It's a quick view when someone's looking through the minutes, that they can see this information and don't have to go back to the agenda to have a look at it. So I'm okay with it being there, but that's just my opinion. Anyone else? Okay, so on, we will go to the vote for the striking of the brief summary on page eight of the minutes. All those in favor? Aye. Three, any opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, six opposed, that fails. Thank you. If I could get a motion for the approval of the minutes as presented. Three and six. Go ahead councillor Dalek, yeah, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nine and two, or seven and two, pardon me? Thank you. And if I could get a motion now to please go into closed session. Councillor Chamzick would like us to go into closed session, all those in favor? Any opposed? See nine and oh. Oh, awesome, we're back here from our enclosed session today. We have a few motions to make from that enclosed session. So, agenda item five point one. We have Reeve Hall would like to make the motion to appoint, and I'm going to try and say this correctly, Andrea Carlian for a two-year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty seven, as a member-at-large on the Agricultural Services Board. And to appoint Penny Miller for a three-year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, as a member-at-large on the Agricultural Services Board. So, if there's any further discussion, all right, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? We have eight and oh, thank you. Deputy Reeve Minz would like to appoint Wendy McLean or McLean for a three-year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, as a member-at-large on the Family and Community Support Services Board. If there's no further discussion there, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? Thank you, nine and oh. And the third item from this five point one was councillor Chisen would like to make the motion for administration to provide advice regarding the upcoming policy for appointing members-at-large at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting. Alrighty, if we're ready for the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I have no opposed, I don't see any opposed, awesome, nine and oh. Five point one is complete. Five point two. We have councillor Chamzick would like to appoint councillor Stasiak to the Blue Heron Vocational Training Centre Board, and further to direct administration to request a delegation from the Blue Heron Vocational Training Centre Board. You're okay? Okay? If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any opposed? None, nine and oh, thank you. Item five point three. We have councillor Calhoun would like to make the motion that Athabasca County Council decline the offer from Aspen View Public Schools as outlined in the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five letter, and further for council to rescind motion CC two five dash five seven nine.
Can I get a recorded vote, please?
Yes, you can get a recorded vote, absolutely. So I'll just ask that everyone hold their hands up a little higher, so, and until I get everybody's names. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? We have councillor Dalek, councillor Chisen, councillor Chamzick, Reeve Hall, Holland, deputy Reeve Minz, councillor Calhoun, councillor Hall. Any opposed?
Nay.
Councillor Capitania and councillor Stasiak. Passes seven to, thank you. And our last item for motions coming out of closed was five point four. And this motion is from councillor Calhoun, who would like to make, to move that council authorize the amended agreement as discussed enclosed. If we have no further discussion and are ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? Nine and oh, thank you very much. Alrighty. We are now moving right along to our eight point one item on our agenda, which is on page fourteen of your agenda package. That is for tax recovery. We have Mr. Director Dally here. Would you like to go ahead and speak on the report?
Thank you, Reeve. Basically, we held a tax auction on November twenty eighth. There was no bids, so basically I'm bringing this RFD forward for the recommended motion, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any questions, any discussion amongst council? Go ahead, please councillor Hall.
I'd be, first of all, be prepared to move the recommended motion. But then the, the two questions are, after the tax forfeiture is registered, what's the next step?
Thank you, councillor Hall, through the Reeve. Next step after that, after the tax forfeiture, forfeiture, county basically would take over the land, but I think there's like a waiting period before it's like fair title, but basically the land defaults to the county. The two pieces of property that's listed there.
Okay. May I ask if we, because there's, as mentioned here, there were, there's item number one, item number two. So with the tax forfeiture title, can we move right into two for clear title? No.
You don't want to.
You can't move it to that.
So then the second question is, how are the reserve bids determined?
Through the Reeve, councillor Hall, the reserve bids were determined by our assessor.
So then in follow-up, one of the things we learned in the past was that sometimes it's a good idea to get a third party to come in and figure out an independent market valuation and offer these for sale on the market again. I've looked at the assessment on these properties, and certainly on one of them, you know, it's got a land value that, my suspicion is that land value assumes that the land is vacant, which of course it's not. But there's a detrimental, there's the potential for detrimental impact from remnants of a structure there, so it would seem reasonable to figure out what they actually are worth in the market and try to sell them again once we've got the tax forfeiture registered, very much like we did in Rochester.
Madam Chair, happy to comment on that. You're probably thinking of the one with the pink house on it. I think it's pink. As previous councillors will know, in the last year, we demoed a couple of properties in the county very successfully, cleaned them up, and will be coming back to council to establish a crisis to go to market. It's really a good idea if we've got unsightly properties that you take as tax forfeiture. If it really doesn't then devalue the property at all, it might actually help the value of property. Sometimes it's best for us to clean them up. So we'll probably bring that back as a discussion item for council.
Okay, does anybody else have anything here? I guess I was just confused because it mentions in option two, after the municipality has acquired tax forfeiture title, the municipality can acquire the property by depositing amount equal to the reserve, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I was kind of wondering, you know, would we move into that area? So that's where my confusion came in.
Different things, okay. We can take a title as, as under number one, tax forfeiture. If we sell it, we're required to send, after all our expenses are paid, the taxes, everything else, we're required to offer any excess funds back to the owner. So if we decided to take clear title, we don't have to do that, but we've got to clear it up with that owner right now.
Okay, I understand.
That's the difference is, so we're better off in category one.
Absolutely, okay, for sure, understood now, thank you for clarifying that for me. Does anybody else have anything further? Are we ready for the motion that councillor Hall would like to register a tax forfeiture title for tax rules four two four, three one four zero four nine, and four two five one six three two one zero? We're ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Nine and oh, thank you very much. Eight point two, Economic Development Elected Officials Course on page sixteen of your package. Here is the recommendation to book the Economic Development for Elected Officials Course on March eleventh, twenty twenty-six, and invite the village of Boyle and the town of Athabasca councillors to participate and share the associated costs. Is there any discussion here, councillor Hall?
Happy to move the recommended motion, but wondered if admin would be willing before, I do that to provide advice on the wisdom of including basically every municipality that we touch, Summer Villages, Thorhill, Black Labyish, Westlock. If we're, if we're hosting a seminar like this, we might as well invite them to, at a fee for service, send their people up. Or maybe you have an opinion that that's not the answer.
So the, the course that we would offer maxes out at thirty individuals? And so that potentially would limit how many municipalities we could invite?
So then I, I would be happy with the recommended motion, but maybe add the Summer Villages in, but never mind, no, we'll leave them out, taken. Just as, as written.
Okay. All right, is there any further comments, questions? All right, please go ahead councillor Chamzick.
I'm pretty sure our last term, this is also the course that was offered, and I just want to say I'm all for training, and I found it very beneficial.
Awesome, thank you. Councillor Dalek?
I don't know, I don't, this is probably on the same topic, but I've still got to take my mandatory course, and it was available in Boyle on December nineteenth.
We are all, we are all registered for that.
We all?
We all are.
Well, didn't we do in one and a half?
Oh, the one and a half.
Oh, that's different, that's a different orientation, this is emergency management on the nineteenth, yeah.
Well, this is elected officials.
Yes, it's emergency management for elected officials course, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other one was orientation in Muni one oh one. Gotcha?
Got you.
Gotcha, all right. So if there's no further comments, questions, all right. The motion that councillor Hall would like to put forward is to book the Economic Development for Elected Officials Course on March eleventh, twenty twenty-six, and invite the village of Boyle and town of Athabasca councillors to participate and share the associated costs. If we're ready for the motion, or the vote, pardon me, all those in favor?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? Right, awesome, nine and oh, thank you. Eight point three, which is the minimum tax, report night, page nineteen, item eight point three on your agenda, page nineteen. This is going to be pretty quiet, so I'll put this one forward, this has come from, you put this, okay, if you'd like to start, go for it.
So I, I added this because it might have come up someone else too, but I, specifically because I think there are financial implications here that we don't yet have advice from administration on. And so we don't know the cost of the proposal, and so I was going to propose to council that we table this type of item until after we've had a budget discussion, because we, we don't know the budget implications, and so I, I'd like to propose we table it until after budget, budget talks.
Okay, and tabling motions are not debatable? So we can go forward with that particular tabling motion at this time? If everybody's ready for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's three and opposed? Two, three, four, five, six, that's six and three? So that, that motion, tabling motion fails? I could put forward a thought for council to consider, as you mentioned, we do not know the budgetary implications, and that would be something I understand would be not too difficult to obtain. And maybe instead of going forward with making a decision on this today, that, that we bring that, ask, request for that information from administration to see what the budgetary implications would be.
That seems like what we just voted against.
Well, that's, that's, you wanted to table it till after budget, but if we're asking for information to come forward, I would think that that would be a different motion altogether to request for information. I'm more than happy to have this conversation and lower the minimum tax rate as, when we look at, I'll just go through, when we look at our different situations that we're looking at from previous information that we have, ten thousand nine hundred and thirteen tax rolls, about twenty-one hundred and sixty-five of those were subject to the minimum tax, generating revenue of a hundred and eight thousand, mostly coming, like I mentioned in the report, from vacant or leased farmland. There's been such a change, that was in the twenty twenty-four assessment, there's been changes in the twenty, pardon me, the twenty twenty-three, seventy, twenty twenty-four year. Twenty twenty-four assessment has changed dramatically, so we really don't know, I'm, I'm guessing that that two thousand impact would be smaller, but that's only a guess. So I know this, this came forward through, since this has put, been put through, since we've added minimum tax, it has not been appreciated by several, I mean, for several residents. I hear about it on a regular, especially with regards to crown land leases. I heard it all through September, October, going and talking with residents and having this conversation. I'm pretty sure administration gets it in the air on a regular as well. Being that we're only dealing with a hundred and eight thousand on the two thousand, two thousand, just over two thousand rolls, I really don't think it's going to be a huge implication, and I really think that we would be able to handle that particular financial setback. So it's really up to, to council how, you know, what your opinions are, and I'd really like to hear them. Please councillor Stasiak.
I, I agree with you, I, I'm one of the people that are caught in that trap, and I have full faith in our assessors to assess the actual value of it, or the new assessed value of it. I think the, the financial part of it is going to balance itself out by those that have increased. We have cases where the general assessment went up more than substantially, noticeably substantially, and those people are not getting a whole lot of relief, so I think the, the extra assessment that we get there offsets the little bit that we're forfeiting here. So I'm in full support of, of changing that from the, changing the minimum, minimum tax.
Thank you, councillor Chamzick.
I have to definitely look at it, but I'm sorry, would you repeat your motion, please?
Well, this one, I don't really have a motion. Oh, I thought it was just a conversation to hear what people would like. The, the recommendation on the report is to lower the minimum tax from one hundred dollars to thirty dollars, starting in twenty twenty-six. So that would be the recommendation. I would, councillor, did you want to, deputy Reeve Minz?
Yeah, I'd rather, before that motion came forward, I would rather get some information regarding how many, how many properties, how many tax rolls have changed since, since we changed our assessment, ways of doing our assessments to, to market, market residential, or whatever it was, a lot of people's taxes went up a great deal. And when it was reassessed from, from farmland to, to non-residential, so.
A vacant residential?
Yeah, yeah, vacant residential, there we are. So, so I'm really, really looking forward for that information to come forward and, and see there, to drop it to thirty dollars, well, that's, that's a huge discussion, and I don't know if I could get behind thirty, but I could maybe get behind something. And thirty, though.
Councillor Stasiak?
Thank you, I, I personally, I see it more as a fairness issue as opposed to a financial issue. I don't, like I said before, I trust our assessors to make a decision on its actual value as opposed to an opinion of what somebody should or shouldn't pay.
Thank you, councillor Hall?
I'm going to offer a counter view to the comment we just heard. It has, is not, like fairness is fair, is, is fine, but the properties that are impacted by this are not assessed at their actual value. They're assessed at a regulated rate, so it has nothing to do with their actual value. And what, what you're seeing is properties that can be worth, in some cases, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, paying, you know, virtually no tax. And so if we do want to talk fairness, we probably should be, you know, like, there's no mechanical way to do this, but I mean, some of those properties should be paying significantly more. So it, it, it impacts regulated rate properties, and, and while I am open to the idea of having a discussion about what's the right number, and is it, you know, how does it work? I think we have to be careful about how we handle things like this. You know, some of the, some of the comments I've heard, you know, we have to look at the tax and say, what are you actually paying in tax dollars versus to how many dollars worth of land do you control? So on a microscopic level, micro level, there's going to be a couple, there's a handful of properties where there's adverse influence, we all know that. But on balance, on the majority of parcels, this is, you know, the impact is not terrible, it actually brings them up to a number that is not unreasonable. So whatever the number we choose as a group, I think what I would really urge council to do first is, before we take on, you know, a, a recommendation or do something, that we should defer You know, a a recommendation or do something that we should defer it out until we've had a conversation with administration and got better information. It's one of the things I think, you know, I learned last time and and you know, the in the past. There were mistakes made around council identifying an idea and or a counselor or a couple of counselors identifying what they perceive as a problem. And then coming to the table with a solution without taking the time to actually go back to admin and say, can you give us the other background? Can you give us the other side of the story? Can you give us the full picture? And that's what we pay these guys to do, we should, before we make a significant change, we should. At least get their view on it and and talk about how many parcels and what are the dollar impacts and and all the things that uh that have been mentioned. By uh our colleagues, so I'm, I I think, I can't remember what your proposal was, I think to to defer it out until after. We've had, you know, admin has had a chance to provide some information, I I think that's the sound decision. And then we can talk about the philosophy of minimum tax in general and and where the right amount is. Lot, some municipalities, it's four, five hundred, some it's two fifty, some it's three hundred, some it's probably twenty five, uh. It it's really all over the, all over the map and and the um. So I I I think, I don't think we have enough information right here to make a decision on this today, we don't know the impacts and we. We um probably. Could benefit from hearing admin's perspective before we just uh prescribe a change, in my view, so I would be happy with.
To direct administration?
What you've proposed, yeah.
Is there any further? So a motion that we can derive from this would be to direct administration. To uh provide further information regarding the impacts of. Lowering the minimum tax from one hundred dollars to thirty dollars. With regards to how many roles are we currently are dealing with, is that's. We'll negotiate that once we get more information, I think, but would that be fair to direct administration to provide? Further information regarding the impacts of lowering the minimum tax rate from one hundred dollars to thirty dollars um. With regards to how many roles that this impacts? Does that work? Um cuz yeah, I I placed quite a bit of background as well in the agenda that um. Give some more information on on some of those impacts that we're we're seeing, and as uh Council Hall had mentioned. Um maybe one property might not be um a big deal, but when you're grouping several leases together in one and they're all different sizes and they're they're. They're not um, they're running into some troubles there, and I'm seeing a lot of that, uh that's been one of the biggest complaints is when you're dealing with several. Several leases uh all at once, um and they're of course handled differently um when it's a crown land than it is if it's private land, so anyway. Leah, did you get that very poorly spit out motion?
To direct administration to provide further information regarding the impacts of lowering the minimum tax rate from one hundred dollars to thirty dollars.
Thank you very much. Is that fair for everyone? All right, we're ready for the motion, all those in favor? Don't hear Councilor Kapitanik, are you there?
Well, I'm waiting till opposed.
Oh, okay, thank you, I just didn't see you. And any, I think that's eight, four and opposed? So that's eight and one, did I get that right? Okay, eight and one, thank you very much. All right. Item up again, eight point four. This is on page twenty seven of your agenda package, and this is with regards to the dreaded, I know, conversation of snow plowing. Um residential snow plowing in our county. I know there is the recommendation here is to look at this, of course, um. As a change to happen immediately, I totally understand that that's really not super realistic. Um it's, of course, what our residents that have um. Brought this forward as as being a real craw on their side for the two hundred dollar flat rate. They, of course, would like to see that change now, I, of course, would completely understand that that would be something if council agrees to. Look into this further, that it would be um probably more beneficial to look at it for the next season, to put it in in play and into the next season, but. Um as you can see here, um the recommendation on this particular report. Is for the snow plowing rate for senior and um I guess it should be better off. It described as physically disabled residents from two hundred dollars per year to the first six snowplows free. With a fee of twenty five dollars snowplow thereafter. Um and again, uh probably starting in the following season, uh and further that seniors and physically delay uh disabled. Uh are to alert administration of the need for a snow plowing service by contacting administration via. Phone or email, and of course, we all know that would follow the policy the same um that. That driveways um have to wait, of course, until um the roads are complete. And further invoicing to seniors and disabled residents for chargeable snow plowing services taking place monthly, Councilor Hall.
How would you feel about? Tabling something like, we're we're into the season, as as was mentioned. Wh- what about the idea of tabling this to a strategic planning discussion? This this is a fairly significant, you know, policy change and. You know, we've um, I mean, at the risk of repeating, you know, comments from a minute or two ago. We've not heard from administration on the number of, you know, the implications of the proposal. And I I think we need to separate the the idea into, you know, what's the problem and what's the solution? And and in the package, we've got kind of both, right, we've got identified some, what one or more people think is a problem and. And one particular solution, but that's not the only solution. So I wonder if it would be better to, given the idea that it's, you know, late in the season, as you've mentioned. To kick it out to strategic planning, where council can have an actual discussion. About what we expect out of the program and who it impacts and how it affects us financially, and then make decisions there. That um, that then can be in place for the next season, and historically, what we had done was we didn't fiddle with. The programs right, like the moment before they were in gear, we did it immediately after the season, so we could do a debrief and. So I'm wondering if it would be, you know, palatable to um. To table it into that, that kind of a discussion, so we can talk about, you know, who who do we want it to impact and how do we want it to impact them and. Um and and get some feedback from administration at the same time, so we can make a sound decision with with kind of that balance.
Yep, um I I I totally wholeheartedly agree that we do need to have further conversation, I mean, that's what. Bringing these forward are uh for is to be able to have that dialogue, I don't know about strategic planning or or level of service. Uh when we.
Or either one of those.
Either one of those, yeah, I think level of service might be the better place to have that conversation. Um but again, you know, it's um, these are requests that have been brought forward from me, to me, from. Uh rate pairs, so that's why it is here and to prepare for the next. Season, I think it's really important that we have this conversation so that. Um you know, it does impact our twenty twenty six budget for the first couple of months of the next season, if if this is something council wishes to go forward. So it's something we definitely need to consider and and look at, as far as I'm concerned, is we. Uh we need to answer to our rate pairs, and our rate pairs have made it very well known. Um and I'll I'll just mention, as we've seen, back to back snowfalls here. Um our operators are not able to keep up with the driveways right now, and so having to provide contractor information to to residents. It really comes back in my ear saying, we just paid two hundred dollars flat rate, and and now I'm having to fork out that that fund for. Um a contractor, so they would prefer, if anything, it, you know, a a different format rather than. The full two hundred flat rate, that was the biggest complaint, Councilor Chamsik.
Um yeah, I was gonna actually suggest cow, but I do like the idea of level of service, cuz I was thinking March, you know. Becoming the near that you'd have more accurate data that you'd be able to pull from, but. I do like the idea, where are we able to um establish a level of service? Timeframe where we could have that discussion.
For the level of service review, we we think council would probably have to ask administration what. What their schedule looks like to be able to bring forward a level of service discussion, I mean, it's we've been talking about for some time, but.
Well, we've got a hundred and sixty six services, which ones do you wanna review?
Well, I think we were talking about a whole review of all of our level of services. Okay, yeah, I I that's what I understood it to be when we identified how many there were, that we would be having that conversation.
Generally, when you have a hundred and sixty six, you have to prioritize which are the ones that are most important and which ones are fine.
Okay, so you're asking for council then, maybe to sit in a committee of the whole meeting to determine what that looks like or a strategic planning meeting? A workshop or some sort.
Call it strategic planning or call it a workshop, like maybe, maybe that is the timeframe in there, like if you're doing planning about what's the most important. Maybe that. Maybe that's part of the, the, you know, what services are critical that we wanna deliver and how and and how do we budget for them and. Um you know, I I see that as being, uh those things being kind of like level of services, strategic plan. What what are we gonna plan to do well, what are we gonna maybe of the hundred and sixty, maybe we only need to do a hundred and fifty five? I I just think it's important, we, I feel like that kind of discussion would would be uh really. Would would be beneficial for council when you're doing that strategic planning, but you know, the more roundtable conversational. How do we, what's the problem, how do we solve it, bring the experts in the room, some of whom are sitting in the. And and talk about what are this? You know, what's the problem and what's the solution and.
Right.
And so for me, I'd be happy to add an extra half a day to that thing if that made sense. But I I just, I think it's part of the same discussion, although I would obviously defer to um people who've been around the industry longer.
No, and I appreciate that, I I personally think that um in having that uh. This comment about level of service and doing a workshop is extremely important, and we do that before we even hit strategic planning. Um so that we're more prepared and in um, I would think it's gonna take a day at least to go through workshop on a hundred and sixty some odd services. I'm thinking would be um, but I could be wrong, Councilor Chamsik.
Just throwing it out there, um I said March, but not thinking about RMA, but um. April, perhaps we could could always forever, the issue is is aligning people's calendars to find time for these workshops. Planning sessions, whatever, perhaps um the cow date in April could be utilized for. That conversation.
Right, but if we do our strategic planning ahead of time, we're kind of, you know. We need to kind of get that done, I think, before strategic planning is, and so I'm thinking, you know, if we look at something in. January or February um might be the better way, just my personal opinion, but Councilor Stasia.
Uh when I seen your proposal here before, I was quite excited, actually, thinking that. This was gonna move forward today, I didn't anticipate that we were gonna put it off again, however. I have two situations going on presently as we speak, uh one lady was in tears when she called called me. She's crippled, she's lost her husband, she said, I cannot afford two hundred dollars, and I said, well, we're, interestingly enough, we're gonna be discussing it soon. I don't know what to tell her, she doesn't have two hundred dollars to hire a private contractor, she uh, she's in a bind out there. I've seen the greater go by yesterday, actually, and passed her place, and I thought, huh, if there was only a way that I could. Go and tell the greater to please go and help this woman out, she's in a bind. But that's another story, and I know the the protocol. The other situation is, and I'd like to see if we can come up with a plan that we can leave some discretion to the greater operators to. Go in, I, one guy just called me as I was walking in the door, and he lives in a remote area in my division. He's about two miles off of, he's he's in the grid, but he's he's two miles off of the main drag. The greater came in this morning, went down the road, didn't do his driveway, he had already paid his two hundred dollars, and I I appreciate the. The policy that the drive, roads are first, driveway second, but when he's there. It's another five minutes, finish that off, he doesn't have to go back to the end of the county. And so is there a way that we can make that adjustment or whatever, so that. Leaving it to the discretion of the greater operator, so he knows what is economically feasible. If he has to go back in five days just to do that driveway and he was there already, is that? Is there any room for a discussion there?
If if I may, and then Deputy Reedmans, I'm sure will will correct me if I'm wrong, but we ran into this exact same type of thing. Um we had this conversation um last season, and I believe it was the season before and two seasons ago. Um and I believe that we had, as a council at that time, uh allowed for leave of the policy. For um infrastructure to make that determination, if they're hitting it like as exactly as you mentioned. It costs a lot more to bring that travel back rather than deal with it, those particular one offs. Um dead ends, um those particular out of the waste bases, and I don't know if that's still something that this particular administration is doing.
I think, I mean, just on the same subject, I feel like somebody might be headed me in the queue, but the. It's about that that motion is really around managing to the result and saying, you know, be smart about how we get deploy resources, and I think. My memory is the same, that council gave administration the decision to say, manage to the result and do some, do, you know, use some common sense, if you're down at the end of a. Two mile space, or if you're you're gonna uh deadhead it or high blade it down six, six, one to to connect, you know, whatever that is down there. Let's manage to the end result, not to the, not to the microscopic, you know, left foot, right foot, what, you know, but things in in front of each other. And I. And I think, you know, the your the first comment from my colleague here about someone not being able to afford this. I I think that's something, an idea you should carry forward into the budget discussions because. You know, solving problems with people in need might be something we need to do through FCSS or through providing a fund to do it. Um cuz, you know, need is not determined by your year of birth, there might be other, you know. I'm trying to see, we 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 may, gotta get into what problem we're trying to solve and what are the solutions to to do it and and um. Maybe, maybe there's another solution that's.
Sorry, should I recommend to her that she contacts FCSS or what response should I give her?
When we get to budget, we should talk about whether we have funds to provide this, or, I don't know. Hopefully, her neighbor does it.
Before I um turn the table back over to Deputy Reedmans, I'll just mention Snow Angel Program, please go ahead.
I guess uh I guess the biggest thing is uh. Uh we go through this, whenever we have these big snowfall events, we go through the same thing as when we have a big rainfall events, everything like that, it's it's uh. Yeah, it's it's uh, I need the greater, I need it now, and uh. What ends up happening is is to to be able to go into that driveway. On a, on a normal smo- uh snow event, great, would make sense, you don't have to go back. But I'll guarantee you that that operator has to go back there, and it's not gonna be, he's not gonna be deadheading all the way back. They're out there, they're removing snow very fast right now, they're trying to get around to everything that they can, because. We've had three snowfalls. In in the last three or four nights, and so there's people out there that have all. Or we have roads out there that have all these snowfalls on, and when they're knocking the snow off. It it's not, it's not, it's not coming off as good as what it should be, so they're gonna be going back and they're gonna be cleaning up. So they're gonna be heading her back there, if it's a normal snowfall event, greater will come through, you know, it'll wing everything off and everything. That makes sense, catch the driveway then, cuz he's probably not gonna come back, but right now, they're coming back. Trust me, they will be back there and and uh and. Everybody's common sense is different, all depends on what's been told to them by their leaders also. It's it's uh, right now, the 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 main process is to get the road, the snow off the roads. Driveways are are second, and uh I'd hate to start deviating off of that right now, it'd be. Be uh, it's a wish wash, it's. We can never be at the right place at the right time, when you have snowfall events the way we have now, so the operators are doing. I'm I'm here and they're doing a great job out there and and thank God we got them, so.
All right, so does anybody else have anything to add other than um? I think the appetite here is to defer this item until after a level of service review workshop?
I I would be happy to move something like that if you massage the language.
So is that satisfactory for everyone, and if we can set it up in sometime mid February? Our level of re- service review workshop?
Could we just say as soon as admin can?
I I I I'm more uh conscious that I don't understand all the things on their plate. They'll set it up.
CEO, how are you feeling about us working through a workshop?
Do you guys pass a motion and we'll adjust?
But what is your schedule like now, because we don't want to create further.
It's full.
It's full. So.
I like the idea of 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 having a discussion on a level of service review and all this other stuff, I I really do, and it's gonna be an all day event. As far as I care, uh bailwag is gonna take like a long time to get through that. But but.
I think the first step, folks, is I said, we can't review a hundred and sixty six services. Are there maybe six that you would red flag out of all those hundred and sixty six that are the most important for this council to review? You're not gonna do a hundred and sixty six services, that's lunacy. But are there five or six that we could look at during this term that are most important, that are affecting people? But are there five or six that we could look at during this term that are most important that are affecting people?
Okay.
We have, we have two that come up. Preferably every year, snow plowing, dust control. That's two that 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 we discuss every year or not, and and yeah, it's it's uh, it's uh. It's a, it's a longer process, so.
Right.
I don't know if if we need to do it for strategic planning or need to do it at the same time we're doing strategic planning or. Two day event strategic planning, that would be.
Adding that to the level of service. So basically, everybody has a copy of all of the level of services that um. C E O Beck has already sent out to everybody via email, so it's something, I guess, as we mentioned, and you know, when we look at doing. Strategic planning that we have that conversation might work well.
I wonder, and this is a council decision, but on how we use committee of the whole. Um, you know, would there be an appetite instead of all the mishmash of things that get thrown in there? Would there be? What if we took it and, you know, one of the really successful things we did as a council last term is we picked one day and we solved one problem. We had a meeting, and I think maybe we're done by noon or something, but we had one topic. What if we laid out kind of as a group, we found a minute to just sit together and and uh. Talk about, you know, the the ten call meetings that happened in the year, or call them whatever you want, governance priorities. And say, we're gonna pick one topic per meeting, and we're gonna, we're gonna make that the major focus of the meeting. And cuz a lot of the other stuff that happens there has value, but it, there's probably a way to streamline it in order to really dig deep on. On specific items, and then we get ten, we have ten good discussions. Through through the year, and then they, you know, we, those meetings add value to what we're doing instead of just being kind of a information. Anyway, that was the idea that I wanted to share with. My colleague, and that might be a way to, you know, to fit it in, something like this in to have that conversation, so you know what, at the January committee, the whole, we're gonna really dig deep on. Snow plowing theory or whatever you want.
All right, so if we put through a motion to keep moving forward here in our agenda to defer this item until after a level of service. Strat plan workshop. Does that work for everybody? Awesome. All right, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Nine and O, thank you. We are moving to eight point five, the. Antis- highly anticipated point of our day.
Yep.
Uh, the twenty twenty six draft operating and capital budgets, page forty five of your package. Um, I I just wanna put a quick comment out there that, thank you, administration. This is a huge undertaking. The changes that you've made are huge uh. Important um, and a lot of work has gone into this. It's one of the. Better detailed, well detailed proposed budgets that we I've seen here in in a few years, so I really appreciate. The effort and the work that you've put into it, and with that, I'll turn this over to Director Dally.
Uh, thank you, Revolun. Uh, so I didn't bring a presentation today, but I basically uh. In the request for decision and then right at the back of the actual budget detail, I uh in the request for decision, I highlighted the. The major changes and they're kind of the, I guess, one sentence, there are reason like we needed to find some of these. Uh, one major reason why we found some of these changes, and then right at the back of the detail, there's a little bit more detail on the changes. Uh, which I didn't put in the R F D, but I put in the back, but basically, other than that, uh. Yeah, we're just bringing the budget back. Uh, our last meeting, we said we wanted to uh kind of dig deeper into. Each department line item except for, so before that app, administration got together, we made these changes that you are seeing in this document today. And now we're here, I guess, to uh kind of look at every uh, every area.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I think um as we kind of, as a group, talked a little bit about how we wanted to get through this here. We know we're probably not gonna get it all through it today, and that's why we have those extra dates that we um put forward on the sixteenth and the eighteenth as well. But I do would like, I would really like to start um each department, of course, um and have a look at. What counselors have to feel about it, comments, questions, concerns. Um, we've had the budget now. Um, this is the second goal round that. The new council has had, so there are, um, if there's any questions that the new counselors have with regards to how it's laid out. To be able to understand it, this is your time for sure to to ask any questions. Um, if there's any concerns or if anyone has any uh other ideas or don't like certain things, this is your time. To to mention that kind of thing. So if we can start uh on page fifty one of the agenda package, which is administrative services. Um. Who would like to begin? I think, as you know, that at the end of the um, as Doc, uh Director Dally had mentioned. At the end, on page one forty five, you will start seeing more of what the interim uh budget changes, the proposed changes are. Uh, what they highlight, um and what's been. Updated. There's the also the budget change request forms that are within the uh the document here. So um I'm just gonna turn it over to counsel, Counsel Stasiak, how what would you like to to bring forward?
I just got a question of clarification on postage, and it was pointed out in uh twenty five that it was thirty nine thousand. And somehow now it's jumped to sixty five thousand in the world of uh e. Communication, I guess, electronic communication, that should have went backwards or just a little bit of clarification there.
Okay, we're on page fifty one.
Yeah.
And postage is um G L code twenty two sixteen.
Yeah.
And twenty two sixteen um is um I think mentioned here on page fifty three for postage.
Yeah.
Um, and it mentions projected postage costs based on history and then the communication flyer mailouts, the newsletter. That's what's increased, um, but I'll turn this over to.
Uh, that is correct, Revolun, uh, Counsel St- Stasiak. Uh, communication newsletter was a big driver of that increase.
Okay, yeah, just for clarification, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for administrative services? Um, going line by line would take us all day, so what have you got, Counsel Dalik?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to go line by line?
No, I just wanna go to uh transfer to reserves.
Okay.
So we transfer mu- transfer money to reserves, uh way down uh.
What page are you on?
Fifty one.
Right.
Down towards the bottom. When we transfer reserves, where does that money go? And does it, or what does it go for? Is it to transfer that, is it for administration services, or is it for or for something else?
Uh, Revolun, uh, Counsel Dr- Dwalik, uh, basically this transfer to reserves that you're seeing on uh. Twenty seven sixty, uh, that's the interest, investment interest that we earn throughout the year. We transfer directly to reserves. Uh, all of our transfers to reserves are basically show up as a surplus at the end of the year, and then. Um, it would, this would probably just go to operating reserves, but at the end of the year, we end up with a surplus. Uh, we would bring forth a motion recommendation where the all the unrestricted surplus would go. So is that council's discretion if they wanted to put it in a specific reserve? But generally, when we make reserves, unless it says a specific reserve, it would probably just go in the general operating reserve. This particular transfer is from the investment interest that we earn throughout the year.
And there's also the additional uh green municipal and community initiatives, uh, policy twenty eight sixty, which is uh the cap levy, if I'm not mistaken. So the cap levy is um expected, and I'll be discussing that next year too. Um, for fifteen thousand on this one, um, is what is expected from it. Uh, we have currently one, I believe, one. Um, aggregate uh producer or seller that um we collect from. Okay. Does anybody else have anything with regards to administrative services? Nope. Going, going, gone, folks. Are we okay with it? Everybody's happy here in that particular um department? Alrighty, so we now will move on to page fifty eight, which is ag services. Um, does anybody, has anybody here from ag services that would like to weigh in here? I believe there have been some changes. Made here, and I'm trying to find them. I think it was in a change request form, trying to find that one. I know that there's been uh the removal of. Big mowing program, pardon me, but I missed one. The egg services, who've we got to?
Big changes, we, in the original uh draft, we proposed an assistant egg fieldman, and in order to. Save due to the tax appeal, we've had to eliminate from that from our wishlist. Otherwise, the the budget's a little bit, a little bit of reduction here and there, but um. I mean, it, the X services board budget, except for the move of the big mowing program from common services to ag. Is actually just a little bit less than the previous year.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead, Counsel Dallow.
Uh, yeah, I I see the. There's a new item of three hundred and ninety three thousand um for rental equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that to do with the uh the the mowing?
That's the big mowing program, and it's just, it's being reduced in a different section of the county, and it shows up in ag.
Okay, but no reduction in services.
Nope, it's the same level of service.
Okay, and please, Counsel Hall.
So we, we all know how important agriculture is to the, the uh, the region, and I guess I'm just wondering if the uh. If if there's other options in the pri- priorities uh to to consider versus the the reduction in the assistant egg fieldman. Um, my my concern really is around, are we able to deliver the services we'd like to be delivering to the agricultural sector? Bu- by doing that, like, are, is there another place we can take this? Um, and you know, thi- this is the kind of stuff that to me can be supported by minimum tax. It can be, there's. Really, are we able to deliver the services we'd like to deliver without that?
In a word, no. I mean, we we would like to deliver more services, um, from what we see. Uh, you know, we, you know, a little thing, uh. We have almost no time to look at, uh, one thing that I know is important to one ca- member of council, that's Counsel Stasiak. Uh, the drainage ditches, we really, with one person in administration looking after all the services, it. We didn't even get any maintenance done on the drainage ditches this year, so for an area that's an ag area, we're an ag area for. A lot of the county except for the the wooded area.
So I'm I'm wondering if it would be, um, you know, what, if council would. Be supportive of asking admin to give us another option so that we can choose, like, could you give us something to trade off? What else could we do instead? And and uh, you know, and I. Hopefully, uh, you know, we find serious options, not something like, we could just shut the heat off in the building. But is there something else that, so that that council has the chance to to weigh in on?
Madam Chair, if that was the will of council, we'd love to look at that. Uh, we're just delivering what we think we could. If that's a new level of service, uh, we needed to find a way to balance a budget, but if council wanted us to, uh. We would love to. We've got one person, one egg fieldman, and he's a bit of a superstar doing too much. And we think he could do a lot more with some support.
Yeah, so um.
Would you like to put a motion through?
Well, I I I I would propose maybe as the chair, you know, your. Language could be, would there be any objections to asking admin to come up with an alternative to save that and keep something? Uh, you know, sacrifice something else, and then we don't need a zillion motions and a zillion votes.
Perfect.
Just, so there's no objections and, cuz it's it's, this is still not a final budget, it's just a conversation.
Awesome. So how is everybody feeling about, um, I I I wholeheartedly agree as well that um. I think uh our manager in egg services has been waiting a very, very long time, and is, I think it would benefit. All the way around if we manage to find a different way uh to keep that position going, so. How is everybody feeling? Is there any objections to that particular tasking administration to look further? Or to keep that position?
I wholeheartedly support looking to keep that position. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Capitania, thank you.
Uh, question for Bob, is that, you have to re- reiterate what you had said before about the shop and saving. Certain amount of money there. Is that available to us? That, or that was just a a number that's just there? Not really, no, uh, is it closed session?
Uh.
I mean, we've, no, I'm just, I'm just curious if we can uh salvage money from elsewhere that we won't be spending, that's. Uh, covers closed session, maybe?
Shop is a capital project.
Okay.
And uh, a new position is operating budget, so.
Okay.
Unless it was, yeah, we have to find a an alternative in the operating budget.
Okay, thank you. I just have one quick, quick question, and and you know, don't shoot messenger, but um, the big um mowing program. Would that also include, and I'm not sure if that's uh again, another level of service discussion. But I don't believe it's been including the municipal reserves uh that are grassy areas, the municipal reserves of the residential subdivisions. Is that something that?
That's a level of service discussion, because uh I think we've learned, I don't see. We've learned that we do some and we don't do some, and no rhyme or reason, Madam Chair. Uh, that we can find. There's no level of service policy been adopted for how often or where, if we even do. Our green spaces that that are in the county's name.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, and even some country residential subdivisions, and some we don't.
Right.
Or we do freak infrequently, and we're just following the past practice, and we can't find any policy.
Right.
Madam Chair, so that would be a great level of service discussion. We would love if that was. One of the top six to review so we could get direction.
That's awesome, because yeah, I'm hearing of, again, like you say, the unfairness is out in the community, and people are not happy that that's not fair across the board. Did you?
Well, I'm wondering if on that note, um, with our mowing programs and some of our. Hamlets that are within, um, if I can also add that to the discussion when it comes to level of service. Thank you.
Alrighty, so how are we feeling now about the egg services? Are we ready to move on? Is is everybody satisfied here? Just double checking, giving everybody a moment. Just, just wanna make sure, just there's a few reviewing going on, so I just wanna make sure you're ready to go forward. Yeah, alrighty, the next item, next apartment, we have on page sixty three of your package. Uh, page sixteen of the agenda, or pardon me, sixty three of the agenda, sixteen of the budget, draft budget airport. Does anybody have anything here? Go ahead, please, Counsel Calhoo, and then Counsel Galik.
I just have a question about the training, um, drastically going down and never uh seeming to come back up in the plan at all to meet. Uh, what it was in twenty twenty five and uh what that's going to affect. Sorry, I should say on page sixty three, and it's on uh item twenty one forty three.
Right, and then the notes are on page sixty four, yeah. So basically, what the notes um mention is the I A A E membership, the A A M A membership and conference. And I'm assuming there's less people going. I'm just assuming that.
Yeah, sorry, I just wa- wasn't understanding what that like affects, what that means, uh, if people aren't coming, cuz it's cut or if it's cut because it's not being used. Sorry.
So basically, we've done our best to just look at historical uh expenses and try and shave. Uh, any budget that where we were under expensed. And so that one was one of the areas that, you know, we hadn't spent the total budget, so. It got slashed. Um, if we find in the future that uh there's a need for that to go back up, we would. Let council know at that time.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you very much, Deputy Reed Menz.
I guess uh, on page sixty four, twenty two fifty contracted services, that's went up from eighteen five to sixty two thousand. I guess uh, on page sixty-four, twenty-two fifty contracted services, that's went up from eighteen-five to sixty-two thousand. Pay runway maintenance, what's that all about?
It's for the runway, it's the, sorry, through the chair, uh, it is, it's the crack ceiling of the runway, so uh, you'll see that it's in this year, and uh, it does it'll be in every year, but it won't be as much every year, so that's instead of having it um, I think previously, it was probably in grocery recovery through public works, it's now here on its own.
Okay, so we did crack seal last year.
Yes, perfect. Yes, my apologies, it's just how it's shown in the budget.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Does it, go ahead, please, Councilor Hall.
So to uh, at one point in time, we talked a little bit about landing fees uh, that we collect. Do we have the salaries included for landing fees in here, and um, because somebody, how how do we determine, how do we, what's the process to collect fifteen hundred dollars for the landing fees? Because I think the question that came up in one of the budget discussions that I don't remember the answer to is is it worth it? If we're collecting fifteen hundred bucks a year, what's it cost us to get that, and should we just not do it? That's question one, and question two is, are we getting market rate on the crop land? Does, does anybody know how we, like, I thought somebody had to listen to the recordings of them.
Yeah.
I think they do.
Yeah, they, they send a recording out, and it gets listened to. Now, I don't know, maybe administration can, can answer this. Do we have to keep track of landing? Uh, of people landing and, and taking off? Do we have to keep track of that for some strange reason, or?
Uh, you know what, I will get a answer back to you on that, I, I don't know. And uh, I do know that we have somebody monitoring the radios, what the monetary cost of that service is. I don't know right offhand, but I can find out. Um, and as far as the leased land, uh, my understanding is it went through the same process as the rest of our leased land, but I can verify that as well.
Thank, okay. Anybody else for the airport? Awesome. All right. We have on page sixty-six of your package, page nineteen.
Can I, can I back us up, sorry?
Absolutely.
On airport. And, and this is a, you know, maybe a question to the chair for the CIO. Um, should is this kind of operating loss normal for airports in rural municipalities? Like I, I will agree that it's a valuable service, it's important to have for air ambulance, but um, you know, it's a, where it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar expense. How do we compare? Like, are we benchmarked others, or is there a business case to try to do something different?
Madam Chair, that, it's a good question. We could probably do some research. Um your questions are level of service questions, they're perfect. They're, you're, we've got a bit of a service that on paper, it looks like it's underperforming, and so we need to find out, is, are there better ways? Um, if it was completely unmanned, we had the same discussion about uh, our campground, for example, so it's the same type of discussion. We're happy to do some research. Um, uh at the end of the day, it, it is a loss of two-hundred-thousand dollars. We've got other cost centers that are worse losses that we'd probably want to look at first, but it should be looked at. Is there a better way, and what is it delivering to the county, to the residents? And is it meeting the needs? And maybe you review it, and you go, no, this is great, or we actually want to improve services, and the loss goes up, and that's okay, that's a conscious decision you make. Uh but that's a fair question. We don't know what we're trying to deliver out there either, um, other than, you know, emergency fixed wing aircraft landing, and we do a great flying barbecue.
Yeah.
Um, that's for sure, but, and it's very valuable for a small number of people.
And so the other piece that I think just, you know, because I'm not sure who's going to be at those discussions when we get into ICF discussion, this is one of the services we need to remember that we provide for our neighbors at zero cost to them. This airport serves town and county residents at zero cost at the town of Athabasca.
Right.
So as we, you know, as we talk through the, the, those other discussions, because you're going to be at that table, um.
Absolutely.
Your mind.
And as you mentioned, you know, emergency services is huge that we provide as well, and, and this being, you know, one of our main locations for air, air uh, medical, as well as, you know, highway sixty-three, and the county is
Other opportunities, you know, with the um with the Jet A or whatever it is that we're working on, to, to have more activity there, and like, and I don't know if that's, you know, high enough priority that, you know, admin directs somebody or not, because I I know we're, you know, always at the risk of saying, hey, here's a new idea, run with it, and, and I, you know, I think Bob's gotten more gray since he started because of
This morning. This morning, yeah, right.
But it's, you know, maybe there are opportunities where something else could happen, where we've got some more forestry or some more, something else going on there, where the the utilization comes up, because my sense of, from, you know, the people I talk to, subsidizing things is one thing, uh, sorry, subsidizing things that people use is one thing. But, you know, big subsidies on stuff that nobody uses, or it's very limited use, so I don't know if this is a good number or a bad number, but I can tell I'd feel way better about it if there's fifty percent more aircraft uh, making landings there than there is today, or, you know, that, that type of thing.
And there's other business models to look at as well, with regards to the new things coming for drones and this kind of
Some places use them as a racetrack.
There you go. We should, we should put a go-kart outfit out there, just saying. All right, we moving on from airport? Nope.
If, if I could just say on that, it's a huge resource to have in our, in our county, that, that airport. First thing is the fixed wing, uh, being able to land for medical reasons. Secondly, uh, actually, the first one is, is to me, it starts, starts to be able to come in and fuel up there, that is that, you know, you talk to anybody, and that, that put us on the map. To be able to uh, have stars come in and, and, and fill up and, and continue on, or on their way back, or whatever. Um it's uh, when you talk to any uh, any people that fly, when our fuel system wasn't working, it was a pain, because they, they, they have to mark out as they're flying where they're getting fuel, whether or not, they actually took us off the map because of, of, we didn't have uh, we weren't guaranteed fuel, so now that we're back to guaranteed fuel, put us back on the map. Yeah, so it's, so it, it seems like it's, I don't know, I, I think it's a huge service. The town used to be with us. They got mad and left the room, so uh, understanding, I don't understand why, but they did, and uh yeah, I think it's a great service to have at the Athabasca Airport. Gotcha.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay. We are moving to the cemetery. Page sixty-six of your agenda package, nineteen of your uh, budget. Um, it's a, it's only a few lines. Does anybody have anything to contribute here? Councilor Hall?
So don't roll your eyes, but like, this is one place we can make a sacrifice on mowing in favor of mowing in other areas. I think it's important, our cemeteries look good. But also, like, I would much rather, like, budgets are about making hard choices, and I would much rather look a resident in the eye and say, you know, we, we cut our county cemeteries regularly. We provide some service to ones that, you know, we don't own, but we're going to mow the hamlets and the, the green spaces, and we're like, we can't be everything to all people. In the last four years, our cemetery mowing escalated at a, a crazy rate, but at the I, I'd much rather see us spend that time and energy and money on places where people who are still on this side of the grass can enjoy it.
I, go ahead, Councilor Chamsik.
Oh, you're going to draw blood there on that lip. I feel very strongly about this. Um, I feel that I've had many residents uh, come to me and see how much they value the service, and I am in support of keeping this service.
Uh, I have to agree, you're thinking
At its entirety.
In its entirety. Four, we have four cemeteries that we look after, that this
No, thirty.
No, 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 the cemetery, this is the cemetery budget that's just for Al Scott, Boyle. No, this is all, all of them, the grass mowing, so these private, private cemeteries in this budget as well. Okay. Okay, gotcha. Because I was going to say, it's a lot for five cemeteries to mow, but good enough. Sorry, please, go ahead.
Yeah.
Stasiak and Dowler, pardon me.
My understanding, in Rochester, the uh, Cemetery Society, I guess if you will, they mow their own grass. What do we contribute uh, out of this fifteen thousand, or the ten-five? Because this year is for the mowing that we do, or is it something else?
Well, the, the cemetery grant um, is out there, it's two years.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, right, I read that, but I just, I'm just curious if uh, is there a possibility if we offered them cash and let them mow it, as opposed to us mowing it? Is, does that save us any money, or is that already been done?
I think that that's covered through the cemetery uh, grant, is it not? Mowing is allowed through the cemetery grant?
Well, yeah, there's grant programs, but there are certain cemeteries that, like peaceful pines, that's that one.
Yeah.
The nicest cemetery in the county, by the way, it's gorgeous. Uh, no, they don't get an operating grant whatsoever.
No, but I'm just saying, if we are mowing that grass and putting it into our budget, would be be better off to give them, say, half of what it costs us, and say, here, you mow it, because you've got your own mowers.
Yes, we would, that's a great idea. We, no, it's a great idea. If we could give a grant instead, and they could leverage it, um, that would help us out a lot.
And just for information, at this point, it's not in this part of the budget, but that discussion was done in town itself, instead of us sending mowers down to cut the community grass. The community themselves would love to get even half of what your costs would be, and they would mow it themselves.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's where, you'd have to get it.
That's in a different part of the budget, I understand that.
Part of discussion.
Correct.
Uh, and it has to do with liability and insurance and things like that, but certainly to a separate group, it's on their land. Um, we, we could provide a grant instead of us going to mow the cemeteries.
Yeah.
And uh, it would save us a lot of
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I think those groups could do it for far more economically than we could.
But it, yes, this, this just sparked that conversation, is that, you know, maybe we should offer the cemetery group maybe half of what it costs us, and they'd be more than happy to do it, or maybe not, I don't know, but it's a thought.
And, and I'll just add to, when it comes to the different cemeteries, as, as you mentioned, your cemetery is close, it's in a hamlet. I'm sure it has its own storage shed for this type of equipment and all of those types of things. We have a lot of cemeteries who are way out there, and um, that's a bit of a different ball of wax to try and expect that as well.
Is there a, a grant for massive locks on those little sheds?
Yeah, right.
You know what I'm saying?
Exactly that, so that's, that's, so there's, you run into all those different logistics, go ahead.
We've had many community um, places that mow and had those issues, and I mean, um, as of right now, as far as I see this, this, that just adds to the list of uh, level of service conversation.
Absolutely. I mean, this is where I'm thinking six level of services, we're going to run, drive, hit that max pretty quick. All right, cemeteries, are we done? No. Don't, oh, Dowler, I'm sorry, Councilor Dowler.
Well, I totally agree that we should keep it, keep the level as now, we can discuss it later, but cemeteries are very, very important to some people, and uh, I would, I'd hate to, I could see there's maybe the funding, the, the grants maybe going every three years instead of two, a little bit of a cut, but it's so little that we can discuss that later. That's not going to affect, but I totally agree, we keep them the way they are.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? The next item we have is page sixty-eight, it's common services. Um, I think there was some changes here made. I, I wish we could find the page that has it all written, but anyway, the Director Dowler, would you like to, or Director Ambley, I don't know if she was in the room? Is there anything here that you wanted to mention with regards, was ERP in this one? No. Common services, sorry, wrong place, I'm thinking corporate, it's getting late in the day, can you tell? Yeah. Please go ahead, if there's
No, I, sorry, uh, Ms. Chairman, I, I was just going to let you know that common services falls under mine. I know you were looking for one of the other
Right, I'm thinking corporate.
It's mostly uh, not hundred percent, most of it's public works uh, and other services that we provide to other departments.
Okay. Anybody have anything they would like to bring, Councilor Dowler?
Yeah, the, the um oh, the consulting fees for the public works building, has that been spilled, spent? Leave us two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Uh, through, through the chair, uh, we did not spend all of that money, uh, because we've kind of put some things on hold for the uh, time, but immediate time. And uh, so there will be a surplus from that line item, and for next year's proposed budget, it has been reduced.
Okay.
Or, sorry, for twenty-twenty-six.
Right. So, again, we've, we are, it's mentioned in the report, um, the request for decision under corporate services, that there was a reduction in the original draft of a hundred and thirty thousand, including a removal of a vacant administrative assistant position, uh, reducing and training office supplies, public relations, and computer upgrades and repairs, so that's what it says, corporate sir, oh, geez, okay, it's time for me to take a break. Pardon me. We don't have it listed here. Okay, good enough, common services, we didn't do a big chunk. Pardon me, guys. Does anybody have any, please go ahead, Councilor Hall?
So we, we've talked a lot over the last couple of years about always having some uh, shovel-ready bridge projects kind of on the shelf and pre-engineered. Do we, this may be in here, and I've not seen the line, because they're, you know, small, and um, is that somewhere in the budget that you can point to us, and are we still? Are, I think it's critical that we have some pre-engineering done on the next project, so that when, um you know, we have uh, the, the province come up with a little bit of money or a program, we're, we are ready to act, and we can, you know, when they announce the money, we can be ready.
Uh, through the chair, Councilor Hall, it yes, it's in our budget, uh, it's not identified as a standalone item, uh, because it's all professional fees and engineering, and most of it's associated with capital projects, so it would fall into the professional fees there. Um, but we don't necessarily have shovel-ready projects um, on anything other than bridges. So currently, we have a bridge. We've indicated to our bridge engineers that we always want to have a shovel-ready project on the shelf, ready to go. Uh, we have not made that step in other capital projects such as roads and so on at this point.
But is, I mean, for the bridge side, as long as, you know, the assurance is, we've got something ready to go, and we're continuing to do that. And I think, you know, so that everybody's of the same mind, some of that, my memory is that it means we anything we spend in advance of a STIP approval is not eligible for STIP, but it also allows us to actually act on the STIP grant when we get it, instead of getting a grant, doing the engineering, doing the work the following year, and having the costs increase so much that the grant doesn't cover the percentage we thought it would. So it's kind of a pre-planning to not eat the escalation, we can act on the, the grant when it comes.
So a short answer through the chair is, yes, we do have one bridge shovel-ready.
In common services. I'll get that straight today. Hey, anybody else? Please, go ahead.
Can I propose a coffee break?
Yes, you certainly can. Once we're done common service, I think, are we? Do you have anything else? Do you have anything for common services? No, everybody's happy, happy? Then we will, thank you, ten minutes, does that work? So we'll, we'll, two-fifty-five, we'll come on back. All right, folks, I think we're, we're ready to reconvene our meeting. Um, it is three P M. Uh, we do have a few other items as well on our agenda that we should probably consider getting through, so we'll hammer through for another. Twenty minutes or so, I think would be fair and, and then get rid, through the rest of our agenda, we'll pick it up on the sixteenth and give administration some time to. Close up their shop as well. So I think. We were done with common services, right? Perfect. We are moving to community transportation, which is page seventy-three. Of your agenda package, page twenty-six of the budget. Are there any? Comments, questions, concerns? We're ready to go?
So this is a valuable service, obviously, to lots of folks in the region. Um, I'm just wondering if, you know, we've really taken the time to challenge the committee to examine the business model and to look at. How, uh, how they can deliver this service more, you know, how can the committee? Is it possible to deliver it more effectively? Is it possible to, to expand the service in um ways to generate revenue? Like, I would be curious when I look at this to see what's the utilization of the service in terms of the percentage time the vehicles are on the road. Versus the time you're sitting in the parking lot. Cause I've been by a number of times here and there's, you know, community transportation vehicle just parked out here. Are there opportunities? And I know some communities, um, wanna save a million would be one through, um. They'd have to look, some uh charity they run where, where they also do some medical transport. To both, you know, recover costs, but it's done actually at a, at a for-profit rate. I think we should be considering. Uh, value add we can provide to the region. That also puts some money back in so we can, you know, make this service even better by, um, by. You know, considering these other, these other opportunities. I've just gone totally blank on the name of that other, that other service, but out of a million they operated and they, they have a contract with Alberta Health Services for. Non-critical medical transports, they'll run someone to the city for a scan. Or, you know, a scan or a whatever you would do at a city hospital and uh. Yeah. And then there.
I hear exactly what you're saying and I think that um administration has really taken a um real good look at how the um. The service is offered at this time and really looking into those efficiencies as you mentioned. Um, and trying to figure out what's the best way uh forward to provide this service in the most cost-efficient way. And I think that there's a lot of work that's going into that through administration and, and Director Wilkinson can. Um, maybe speak to a little bit to that as well, because I think they're doing an excellent job in figuring all of that stuff out that makes sense for our community. Um, Councilor Chamsley?
I thought. Two years ago-ish or so, we did expand the service to be able to go out to Lacklavish and Edmonton as well for some of those medical. Transports as well.
That's for ones where you order it though, um, there's.
Can you speak up?
That's for ones where you order the service versus where AHS wants to send someone. So, you know, if it's transporting you from here to Edmonton or here to Lacklavish for a, a procedure. Um, but there, there's also moments where AHS will send someone from, you know, the healthcare center here into the city. And they'll use an ambulance. The problem then comes, A, number one, an ambulance leaves our community and we all know they don't come back as quickly as they leave. And, and while we've heard less about it lately, you know, it wasn't many years ago where. We're hearing regularly that, you know, an ambulance would be needed in Boyle and it was being dispatched out of Saint Paul. Now, I still love the view, when I need an ambulance, it's not like a taxi where I might want it in a while, it's, I need it like five minutes ago. And it coming from Saint Paul is not. Good, so finding ways to, you know, to keep those valuable critical services home. At, at home or at close to the base is important as well. So I think, I think, yes, we did expand it, but I think they're two different.
Yeah.
Um, things.
Okay.
The thing is called focus.
Focus.
And a lot of the guy's name is connected, I think, ends in snow, starts with snow, Greg Snow.
Alrighty, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? All right. We are going on to. Economic development on page seventy-six of your agenda package, page twenty-nine of the budget. Is there any comments here? I think there was some changes mentioned. Earlier, um, but yeah, is there anybody? Be quiet. Go ahead.
Oh, I think some of the changes were using some of the old A Red and Ted budget.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. Quiet, all right, next, we move on to the emergency management and Highway sixty-three emergency services. Page seventy-eight of your package, page thirty-one of the agenda. Is there any conversation here? Please go ahead, Councilor Stacey.
Just very briefly, can you explain what that is, that uh service, highways sixty-three services?
Yeah, so, yeah, um, years ago, long before I arrived, um. Um, this was back in twenty-ten, twenty-twelve, there were, before the highway was twin, Highway sixty-three. Uh, that was a very dangerous highway and um. Uh, there were a number of accidents along there that basically it was too much for local volunteer firemen to handle. And there was a real crisis in this county, I understand, um, where uh it was hard on fire. Firefighter personnel to respond to those. Eventually, the province stepped in with a grant to us and. Lacklavish County, because a lot of the service areas to the north, which is Lacklavish County. Um, and we secured the services of a contractor to help us with rescue services. Uh, especially for highway wrecks. And then the highway was twin, which. Helped, uh, but sometimes the speeds actually went up, um, so to this, to today, we still have a highway contractor. We get a grant from the province to help us pay for it, but it saves our local fire department, Wandering River and even Grassland. From responding to every call, uh, they're there twenty-four seven. So that's what that Highway sixty-three rescue is called.
So is it situated like halfway up to McMurray, like Wandering River-ish?
It's right in Wandering River, but they will respond. It's right in Wandering River, but they will respond all the way. They'll respond wherever they're called, even certainly north of us into Lacklavish County. And if they had to respond north of that into Wood Buffalo, they would.
So that's fire as well as ambulance or just one or the other?
No, that's just rescue, highway rescue. Uh, EMS is completely different and that's not us. Okay.
Thank you.
Does there, do we know the certain kilometer that they are? Do they, I thought they stopped at a certain kilometer. Am I wrong?
Well, uh, Lacklavish only goes for certain kilometers, but if they're required to go, they just go. They're allowed to go into another jurisdiction if.
Oh, absolutely.
If they're asked, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought there was a meeting point between Wood Buffalo.
Well, it kind of is because they have a response. Uh, Wood Buffalo can respond quite a ways into that area as well.
Okay, awesome. Go ahead.
So for administration, I guess, just so that we're all clear, this this is the service that is exclusively focused on Highway sixty-three. We get two-thirds of the funding, but it costs at the Baskin County. Over two hundred thousand dollars a year to provide services on a provincial highway that primarily is serving a municipality that's not ours.
Yep. This budget is for emergency management and Highway sixty-three emergency?
Okay.
Yeah.
So this would include?
This includes the emergency management, which was a new budget, as the old council knows. Uh, that was a new budget last year in twenty, or for this year, twenty-twenty-five, and I think it was in the in the range of ninety thousand.
Okay, right.
We had it buried in fire before, and we thought it, emergency services, Matt, emergency response, emergency management, it needs to be in its own category.
And that and that's, and so my concern is is really around just how much are we subsidizing, you know, this exact, you know, the services on the highway?
For another municipality?
Well, I mean, the economic activity is.
We'd have to look into that a little bit.
Yeah.
Because we do get the highway response fees from it as well, so there's a there's a bit of that.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We are going to move to enforcement services, page eighty-one of your package, page thirty-four of the agenda. Is there anybody who has anything they'd like to discuss here?
So, Madam Chair, this is one where. We have reduced one seat peace officer to help us with our budget issue, so there's a reduction of level of service here.
Okay. Now, how does that, um, that will eventually impact then contracts that we have with other municipalities? Okay.
Impact all our levels of service.
Okay. So that Summer Villages as well? Yep. London Municipalities, okay. Is there any? Well, you know, it's for me, um. Yeah, it's it's been a big jump in our budget to start with when we added the third one to include a vehicle as well. And I don't know if we have the stats to show um how much that that went towards other municipalities. And, you know, the contracting their services, um, it still ends up costing the county, um, in my opinion, quite a bit, but go ahead, Councilor Allen.
I I I think this is gonna make some people pretty happy in in my area, because. I I get, often I get complaints, you know, why do we get so many peace officers, you know, um? So, uh. Not that I agree with them, but uh.
I thought it was Division Six who was asking for more.
Well, depends who you talk to, right? Yep, absolutely. All right. Is there anybody else for this one? Okay, we are going to facilities, um, which is on page eighty-four of your package, thirty-seven of the agenda. Um, another one that's. I think we're playing a little bit of catch-up with, so is there anybody who has anything on this one? All right, it's just about going, going, gone. Okay, the next one is, um, our beloved family and community support services, page eighty-six, um, page thirty-nine of your. Budget. Um. I know that they work extremely hard over there for um ensuring their budget falls within their needs. More so than their wants, from my understanding. So, um, I think there was some change, a few changes there, but I can't remember what they are. They have it. Does anybody else have anything to comment here? FCSS? Go ahead, please.
So I've I've had, you know, the feedback I've had on this has been that we offer sort of a Cadillac service on FCSS. It's one of the. Um, it's an example of a really well-done program. And and so that's something I think we should be proud of. And again, my understanding is that we more or less over contribute, like the county over contributes in order to provide this full basket of service. Do we, do we get that same kind of extra support from all the other uh local governments that that pay in? Or like, or do these amounts kind of represent the minimum of of what they're um? What they're doing? And I and I noticed that Island Lake uh is not in there, but because I, again, gather they do their own program. Does that also mean we didn't, we discriminate against their residents and don't let them in? Because it's a, it's a community that, um, from an assessment basis is as big as the village of Boyle.
Madam Chair, if you're looking at just in terms of ratios, uh, the county. Over contributes compared to some of our neighbors in the additional category, but. Um. It's been a point of pride, I guess, for for us to be doing that. It's, yeah. It is a premium. Operated service in Alberta. And it makes makes our community a pretty, pretty darn good place.
And I, yeah, and I, that's why I wanted to start off with saying it's, you know, well-respected and valuable and.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, just about quarter after three, we'll move into the fire protection services. Dun 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 dun. On page ninety of your agenda package, page forty-three. Of the budget, then page forty-eight-four, um. Do we, we don't have Chief Shapley here, do we, to ask a few questions? Sorry? Okay, well then, may I ask, um, on page one hundred of the agenda package? There was the budget change request form put in, and I was just looking for clarification because I didn't really understand it very well. It was two hundred forty thousand towards the purchase of either wildfire sprinkler sprinkler protection trailer. Or towards the purchase of a used apparatus to free up a structurally rated tactical tender, tender nine-five to be relocated. Um, I didn't understand what that meant at all. I, of course, understood the wildfire sprinkler protection trailer, which. I would put personally by priority two, but I didn't understand what it meant by the used apparatus. Um, to free up the structurally rated tactical tender, tender nine-five, and I think tender, if I'm not mistaken, the nine is. Not our municipality, not our district. Um, please, go ahead.
Uh, rebound the two, the only item that's in the budget is the committed nine forty-five, uh, remaining balance of that ninety percent. It's in there as a capital item. The two forty, um, I think we removed from the budget, although it's in the. It's in the business case, but after initial, when, actually, it was removed even before the first budget came, um. Fire chief, uh, Shapley, uh, we talked about this before we even brought first budget. And he said, yeah, really, he said, really, the main one that I need would be the first one, nine forty-five, because we already, like, did a contract and committed that.
Okay.
And that's in capital. Thank you.
Okay, so we're not looking then at a wildfire spring. We can't ask for that all. Okay, sad. Although, um. I'll I'll just put it out there as well. I don't know if council has an appetite to ask for a little bit more, if we can ask administration to dive in a little further. Um, a wildfire sprinkler protection trailer, just in my personal opinion, is extremely important and preventative. Um, and I think, as we all know, when you have those types of pieces of equipment in saving homes and infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. I know it was utilized well in in the fire, uh, to save a lot in the village and our county homes where the fires, uh, went around rather than through. Um, so I'm not sure if council has an appetite to ask administration if there's a way to look a little further. If this is something that we can consider, um, preventative usually saves us money in the long run. And so, and that's not only here in our county, but it's province-wide and insurance premiums.
Yeah, we could look into that.
I appreciate that. Is that something council's agreedable to? Awesome. Thank you.
On a basis of like trade-offs or?
If we can find it some, if we can find some savings somewhere else, if. I'm not sure, um, what it'd be, what administration could come forward with, but I just.
Take it away and.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Appreciate that. Go ahead, please, Councilor Chamsik and then Councilor.
The only other, uh, thing that I really noticed, um, going through the budget, um, of course, I always have some concerns about. As we all know, cell phone service is an issue throughout the county, and I see some landlines, um, being removed from some halls. And I'm just wondering if that would be, sorry, on page ninety-two. If, uh, that is a necessary adjustment.
Um, so we felt that, uh, because all the fire halls have Wi-Fi, they have access to Wi-Fi calling. Yes, some of the halls don't have great cell service, but, uh, there is the ability for Wi-Fi calling. And it was a place that we felt we could, um, cut some budget. Okay, answered your question? And I guess if I could add to that, they all have radios as well, and they rely heavily on the radios. Okay. Yeah. I'll just mention cell service is something we should also consider, um, coming up with as a conversation for strat planning. Um, does anybody else have anything with regards to fire services? I think we all know how incredibly important it is and. How we're seeing events happen closer and closer together and more frequently, but, um, once again, go ahead, please.
Yes, underline, uh, twenty-two fifty contracted services, we're going from one point seven to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, um.
Which page I'm switching?
That would be on page ninety.
Page ninety, okay.
Twenty-two fifty.
Contracted services, yeah.
Then jump to where where it's actually there on page ninety-two. At the bottom. You know, on page ninety-three at the top, there's, uh. Does this have the potential to to? To jump back up, like, if we get another wildland fire, um, does that? Cost in there have the potential to jump up?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah, I mean, uh, if we don't budget for it, uh, but absolutely, we're. When we bring the reserve policy ahead, you'll see there's a dedicated reserve for emergencies in the future, but. You're right, every time there's an emergency, it's going to end up in that category and it affects the budget later.
Okay.
And so, uh, you know, with the, I can't remember, they just changed the name of the grant program that we can access. Uh, but, uh, the province has brought in grant programs to offset wildland fires for us, which is fantastic. It's good move by the province, and that's where it would end up.
Okay, okay, so it's good.
Oh, just hang on.
Uh, yeah, twenty, uh, twenty-five-ten, again, supplies. So we cut way down on the supplies, uh, that we needed.
Twenty-five-ten?
Yeah.
Page ninety.
Was it four sixty-three and went down to one ninety-nine? Oh. Page nine.
And then page ninety-five. Sorry?
Page ninety-five, ninety-six, yeah, we cut way down on supplies, I guess.
Oh, yeah, Madam Chair, some of that, that was a, the the one was a, uh, a. Settlement we received for the Castland, Castland Fire Department, uh, so that was a big number, that was a one-time thing in twenty-five. And then we've got some other one-time things. Yeah, including Highway eight thirty-one fire again, so.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of one-time things that just happened in twenty-five. That's not to say some of those things couldn't happen again, and thus where they would end up.
Yeah, okay, no, thank you very much.
Councilor Paul?
On, uh, at the beginning of the budget section, it talks about, uh, community protective services having a reduction in the overall, uh, draft. And then, uh, one of the items it includes is the paper call fire staff. And so I just am looking for admin to talk us through how we reduce the the paid-on call, because I think. You know, council felt that was pretty important and what's happening that.
Yeah, through the chair, um, for sure. So, uh, when we first proposed it, it was basically a guess based on a lot of research that we did with our neighbors and such. But since that time, we implemented it in August, I think, and we've had a number of pay periods. And so what what we've done is averaged per pay period and budgeted based on actual since August.
So it's, it's just a good refinement to the number instead of, we're not taking away anything from.
That's correct. No, we're not taking anything away. We're just taking the net, the data that we've collected since we implemented it and tried to budget using those numbers.
Yeah, in fact, we're really happy with the uptake from the fire personnel there. They've really taken to the program.
That's awesome. That's good news. All right, um, I think, folks, for in the in the name of time for today, um, if we can stop now, we'll pick up at G I S Services on Tuesday. For our next meeting, if that's fair, if council's okay with that. We will table the rest of the budget until the sixteenth. Which then will move us to.
Would you like to make a motion to do that?
Sorry? Would you like to make a motion to table?
Well, that's what you said, so I'm just worried if you're, like, are you making a motion to table the rest?
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm until the sixteenth, yep. If that's okay with everybody, we're ready for the vote on tabling to the rest of the budget to the sixteenth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I don't think there's any opposed. Awesome. Okay, so I just got to get reorganized here. Bear with me. That's, here we go. All right, so we are on community event calendars, which is, thanks, Councilor Chamsik, one fifty to page one fifty-one.
Was that something you would like to? I have just two additions for January, on the thirteenth, um, Atmore, um, general meeting. And the twenty-sixth of January, uh, Grassland General. For their eggs, uh, we immediately, sorry.
Okay. Yeah.
On the thirteenth is Atmore, uh, Community League's general meeting of this January. And then on the twenty-sixth of January is Grassland Egg Society's, uh, general meeting.
Do you have times for those?
Seven o'clock for Grassland and seven for Atmore.
That's not.
That's already done. That's the, just the general meeting or monthly meetings.
Awesome. Anybody else? Alrighty, I think then if we can get a motion from Councilor Chamsik to, um, receive the. Community event calendars as discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Are there any opposed? Nope, nine and O. We will move to our meeting calendars on page one fifty-two. Yes, please.
Um, just a reminder, on the seventeenth of December, ASB is canceled. And for January, um, Pembina on the twelfth, ASB on the thirteenth. And then, um, I would like to discuss the twentieth and twenty-second of, um, possibly, especially. If the appetite there is to move, if we can move the county council, seeing that we'll probably, as far as I know, have four members gone due to the ASB conference. To either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-ninth.
I like it. The only concern I have is would it impact any files for MPC?
That is a good question.
But I meant we could, we. I know she's one. If we moved it. Yeah. Boy. Just hang on, we'll, we'll, there's conversation happening. It'll be, it'll be okay, and if not, I'm sure that Count Director Wilkinson, yeah, okay, so we'll move the, um. Okay, and we're gonna move. Well, I'm not really sure, is Pembina's on something that we have to?
It's on Zoom, I think. It is, we received an email earlier that it will be on Zoom, sorry, I should make that.
It'll just be, uh, yeah, basically an org meeting, because we don't have a chair or vice chair, so we need to elect a chair. It'll just be a, yeah, basically an org meeting, because we don't have a chair or vice chair, so we need to elect a chair and vice chair and.
Okay, so it'll be an org meeting and then somebody else will book it after.
We'll pass the files to the.
Fantastic.
Next county.
Okay, so that's Zoom. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And the move of the MPC and the County Council meeting on the twenty-second will go to the twenty-ninth. Same times. Um, and just a quick reminder, tomorrow is uh morning at Brighton. Early seven AM for the Mayor and Reeves breakfast, and that's at Johnny's. Tomorrow morning, the I don't know if tickets are still available. For that, but if you would like to attend, it will cost you thirty bucks to go.
Um, sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't sure. Did we figure out anything for the twentieth? Are we?
Oh, the committee of the whole?
There an appetite to continue with that meeting? Or I don't know where, how heavy they're administrative. Am I loud enough for you, Cap?
I'm sorry, yeah, I I actually couldn't hear what um Reeve Hall said. I understood that. Cow was moved to the twenty-seventh and council to the twenty-ninth, so I heard wrong.
Right, we just so far moved MPC and the uh County Council to the twenty-ninth?
Okay, thank you.
No worries, and then we're talking about the committee of the whole now, whether to cancel it or move it. And I think with some of the topics that we talked about.
Is there a reason to? Like, how many people are away, and is there a reason you can't just?
Four.
Four.
And everybody's going, of course.
So we can either, yeah, and. I'm I'm fine with moving it to the twenty-seventh if everybody else, if that works for everybody. The committee of the whole on January um twentieth to January twenty-seventh. Yeah, works for everybody? Okay.
I.
Awesome, okay.
And just, and just for tomorrow, uh, December twelfth, we have the um.
Pardon me?
We have a meeting tomorrow uh for the um rural. Conference.
No, no women's. We're, what is it now, Athabasca County Rural Women's Conference?
Yes, they changed their name, so. So that's uh tomorrow at.
What time?
Ten AM?
Ten AM.
Ten AM?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome, all right. Please.
I just have a question for Council Chamsik. Are we still having a Zoom meeting with the library board on fifteenth? I had that tentatively in my calendar.
On the fifteenth, no, it was moved to, hold on here, it's uh. Oh, yes, on the fifteenth, I never got that one.
Yes, we are.
Um, it does, it, we can set up Zoom for you if you'd like, but it is going to be in this office.
Oh, okay, okay, is that January fifteenth?
Yeah, no, December, like Monday. Yeah, sorry about that. I missed that one. I know it, but I forgot to put it. Thank you.
And sorry, what was the meeting?
Uh, Athabasca County Library Board.
Atha County, okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Go to Council Hall?
Multiplex uh ARMS meeting is on the fifteenth of December.
Fifteenth of December is ARMS, okay?
And then um. I'm wondering if uh Ms. Blair has received the updated calendar from. The multiplex manager to share the the next year's worth of meetings. So probably not, so we'll just arrange to get that sent. Greater North has uh decided their meetings too, but I can't remember them off the top of my head, so I'll make sure that comes in. And then Water Commission has approved in yesterday's meeting a couple of changes to February and November, I think.
February and.
Well, we know it's November. It's November from the eleventh to third, because apparently we can't meet when one of the staff is on holidays. In November third, yeah, and February something.
Are you able to send those dates? Are you able to send those dates to?
No, I think the uh the administration of those organizations can do that.
The on.
My expectation is the commission should send that. But.
Okay, commission will be sending that, okay.
We'll make sure that it happens.
Awesome. Okay, um, and just one other quick thing. I've been hanging on to this letter from Portage College. Um, the Board of Governors would like to take an opportunity. To um extend an invitation to council to meet with their board and administration. Um, there are several dates that they have offered, um, starting January fifteen, March nineteen, April sixteen, May fourteen, or June eighteen. What they've mentioned here is that we can either join uh virtually or face-to-face at the Lacklubish campus. Um, they will include lunch at one PM. And this is, um, they do have a new um president there, I think is what they've called the new president, yes? And so um if council is interested, I know March has become extremely busy, January is also. Um, busy for us, but more travel, if you choose you would like to travel um in either April or May. I think might be good opportunity for us to go and have a visit if if everyone is interested. But we do need to get back to these people. I've been hanging on to this for very long. So there's April sixteenth is the one, it's a Thursday, and I'm just going to double-check to see which. Council meeting um we have in April. Um, and April sixteenth is free for no council meeting, but May fourteen is not. So if April sixteenth would be a date that we can get back to um. Portage College with, that would be great. And then what available counselors who would like to attend can attend. Does that sound fair? Okay, perfect. Awesome. And other than that, do we have a motion? Yes, please.
We've got dates from uh Lacklubish County Council would like to meet with this county council. Um, in February, either the ninth or the eighteenth.
Ninth or the eighteenth? February ninth?
Ninth or eighteenth?
The eighteenth, the eighteenth works better.
Council, the Holocaust, you'll make either one of those work, won't you? Yeah.
This February ninth worked well for everybody?
That is uh.
It's a Monday.
Oh, sorry, I can't. For which?
So, waste.
Regional waste is on that day? The eighteenth?
Eighteenth looks open.
February eighteenth, everybody, right after Family Day.
So Wednesday?
Yeah.
That is, I have. Let's make the eighteenth out there. Let's blow it out there. It seems to be. I don't see a whole lot of.
Okay.
There we go, February eighteenth it is.
We'll get, we'll get more details after.
Here, there.
And we'll find out what we're trying to achieve and, yeah, it won't be. I think it would be like a. Ten o'clock till two o'clock type of things, so.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so that's in there. Anybody else? I think we got it all covered. Do we have a motion to a to receive the Deputy Reedmans would like to put the motion forward to receive the calendars as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No, perfect, all right. We are done. Section ten, eleven. I put on there, I just wanted to quickly mention um. Uh, thank you very much to all of those who are um submitting their reports for the committees and boards. Um. These reports are really valuable, and we took just to discuss that. Um, how this information is keeping everybody in the loop on what's going on with all of the committees and um. Just a friend reminder as well, um, that council, for council, that reports are responsibility of the committee reps to submit. For the agendas, um, minutes, et cetera, will not be searched out by administration, so those. Minutes that you have, please bring them forward um to add to the agenda. Um, and I think there's, oh, there was one other quick reminder I wanted to mention for reporting uh for conferences and conventions and whatnot. Um, except for Army, doesn't include Army, but any other ones that you attend, you have to have a written report within forty-five days. Or you may lose the opportunity to going to another co- conference, so just wanted to give everybody a quick reminder. Um. Eleven point one, sorry?
And we have a discussion about, I know, you know, you would prefer minutes in the agenda. But we have a discussion about what council wants. Do we want the minutes of every other committee in our agenda package, or are we happy with? You know, three paragraph report or two paragraphs of the highlights?
Well, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to intend to say minutes have to go. I just meant that if you are submitting minutes, it's up to you to supply them. Administration's not going to provide them, sorry. Is there any confusion there, I may go?
Sorry, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question regarding, um, you know, the little blurb after our conference, whatever, right? So uh, Council Stasia and I went to one together and we were like. Just gonna take turns with the FCSS hats, whatever we wear. Is that sufficient? Because I know he wrote up something about the conference, so I have to do one as well.
Or you can combine them. So quite often then when we have, in the past, we've, if more than one has gone, we combined them. We work together on them and put it together. Does that work?
Yeah, I actually had. Prepared today the verbal presentation as opposed to uh. All we do that.
Perfect, and then it can just be submitted for the next agenda. Yeah, there's plenty of time. Perfect. Collaboration, gotta love it. Okay, is there anything else on reports, folks? Okay, so we have um real quick here, um. I wrote down eleven point one F. I believe the minutes were already shared. This is for the Athabasca County and Town. Of Athabasca Inter municipal Committee. I believe the email went out. Um, CEO Beck shared those particular minutes, so um if you have any questions on those, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, I just wanted to mention real quick, um, because these are a little late to be putting in the agenda, December. This is eleven point one H, pardon me, Athabasca Lang Trail Steering Committee met. We were kind of in and out on Friday to, so we missed some of the more important uh portion of that meeting. Um. I have asked um Counselor Edwards with the town who did some um AI notes. From that to share those notes, so that I'll be able to give you guys a a better report. Um, and I don't know how many notes that um Counselor Callan, who also took, but it was a very informative meeting, so I'll bring that next time. Um, and rather than trying to piece it together today. And then same with eleven point one Q, the community transportation. Um, I'll share those uh minutes and and a small report from there. That meeting was on December fourth. And so uh rather than inundate you with all that information, it'll come next meeting. And then we'll, I'll turn it over to Council Chamsik.
I'm gonna be oddball out, because my minutes are like probably twenty-five minutes long, so I am doing a quick verbal. Uh, Barb Smith for Northern Lights Library Service Systems uh has been voted in for the general. We've been working hard on efficiencies for budget. Forming partnerships with Yellowhead Peace, ELTA uh Library Association. Uh, to form stronger uh conference at attack savings. We also did a review of our IT. And we were able to find over thirty thousand dollars savings for Fortigate Firewall and warranty concerns ready to roll out in twenty twenty-six. Keekano is also almost ready to establish a library board. Um, this will be the fifth joining our OSOR um settlements. Um. And also, other than that, just keeping it short. Uh, we're also trialing a new uh book warranty program for soft covers, helps with supplies and materiality. And also ordering books through NLLS also offers efficiencies for libraries at greater discount. I'll leave it at that.
Perfect, thank you very much. Does anybody else? I think we have. Exhausted this part of the agenda. We had one item left for enclosed that I think. Due to the time and uh. I think I love, love the coined decision fatigue has uh set in. I know it has for me. That maybe we leave that particular item. It's something that we'll see on our, all of our agendas going forward. So there's nothing really to table. It'll just be there next time. Are we good? Everybody good? Council Hall, you look perplexed.
If we're adding it, I think we should be dealing with it. I'm I'm fine with. A motion to delete it from the agenda, but um. I don't think you. I don't know. I mean, it's just more typing for Leah, but it. I I don't like that you're just leaving it on ignored, forgotten, but. I'd be fine to suggest delete that item.
Or table it till the next um.
Whatever.
Session. Okay, so that would have been, um, I don't even know what item, five point eight. So if we can please table five point eight until. All those in favor? I think we lost Council Tanya, I see no opposed, eight no. I would officially like to adjourn this meeting then at three forty-one.